Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll do roll call. Mark Burchard?
Here.
Maureen Bory?
Here.
Joanne Shirkey is absent, excused. Artie Bryson, absent, excused. Kristi Hilton?
Here.
Chris O'Regan?
Here.
Cindy Valentine, here. And I will... Accept a motion for someone to chair the meeting?
I'll make a motion that Chris O'Regan chair the meeting?
Support.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Ready to go, Chris.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nope.
Okay, let the fun begin. Next, we have bills payable, an amount of $10,596.41. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for bills payable for $10,596.41.
Support.
We have motion and support. Are there any other discussion about the bills payable? Nope, hearing none. That'll be a roll call vote.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
Chris O'Regan?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Burchard?
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have the supervisor's report. As of the week 9/30/21, so this is me reading our supervisor, Artie Bryson's, report. And maybe a little ad lib. First topic, I had received, the Harsons Island Transportation Authority received a 250K grant from the state of Michigan to research alternative transportation at Harsons Island. They have three years to spend the money as long as it is to carry out their mission statement, which is to plan and establish a safe, reliable, and cost-effective transportation to Harsons Island. Item number two, working on the car and truck leases, availability is a big issue. That's for our Clay Township PD and also, I believe, our water department?
Uh huh.
Um, working on, let's see, he says he's working on the building and blight issues. Mr. Bryson is also working on finalizing the audit. Number five on the agenda, the hoist is being installed at the Pearl Beach Pier. And we just got an update from Mark, who stated that the hoist appears to be installed at this point.
Well, installed and the boat is in the cradle.
Boat is in the cradle, so we're looking forward to that. Accessibility. And it was called Unlimited Charters?
Unlimited Fishing Adventures.
Unlimited Fishing Adventures. Next order, with the huge amounts of rain and high winds last week, we had a leak in the roof at the township hall and office. We patched it as best we can, but we still have to get some bids for a permanent fix. Working on the Clay Township bicentennial celebration. Remember, honor, and celebrate is the slogan. The township, with the help of the police department and the fire department, did a drive-by for our resident Virginia's 100th birthday last week. I saw that post, thank you very much. I'm sure all that helped make her entire day, I'm certain of that. She looked like she had a big smile. The Sixth Annual Scarecrow Festival is still scheduled for Saturday, October 30th, from noon to 4:00 PM. If you have any questions, please contact Cindy Babish.
Correct.
At our township offices here. Our Clay Township Police Department are doing their Hunter Safety Class again on October 12th, 13th, and 14th, after school, from 4:00 to 8:00 PM. Dinner will be provided for the participants, and class size is limited. So registration is currently ongoing at the police station, and seats are numbered. So if you're interested in getting your youth to Hunter Safety and having them go through that process, which most of us are firm supporters of, please contact Clay Township Police Department.
As a correction to that, I believe this year they have to register online with the DNR, but they can contact the police department for sure on that. But I believe that was a change this year.
Thank you.
Just for some clarification there, so nobody's surprised when they call.
Right.
So that's what I see as this week's supervisor report. Let's move on to the public comments. Are there any public comments today? Please feel free to step up to the podium, state your name and address and your concern. Or your comment.
You might have addressed them, or Artie might have already addressed them. You mentioned something about his meetings. My name's Tom Frisell, 7882 Lake Drive. And most of these are just from our neighborhood, Inglewood, Lake, and Stark Drive. And I turned in a couple of complaints, and like you mentioned in his supervisor's report, maybe he's already addressed these. So these are just some quick questions I had.
Okay.
Maybe, I'm not supposed to bring them to you, or what, you can point me in the right direction.
Well, we can relay them.
Yep, I got three complaints on, back from April. And, you know, maybe they've already addressed them a little bit. There's a one on Inglewood where the house burned down ten-some years ago. And there's 7878 Inglewood. And there's an old boathouse there, and a shed, and they were storing stuff. It looks like he's starting to work on it. They painted it, and it's kind of like perfume on a pig, but maybe there is something going on there. They're fixing it up. It had a air conditioner upstairs, and the windows are blacked out, so I don't know what's going on in there. But anyway, that was one, and that was turned in back in April. I just haven't heard nothing. There was another one, a house, elderly gentleman had a reverse mortgage on it. He ended up giving it back to the mortgage company, and that's 7786 Lake Drive. And this was from 4/19/21. House is vacant for a long time, it's in major disrepair, house is on a slab. The old man took the boathouse, or the carport, and closed it over the years and worked on it, and filled gravel around it, and at the end, he had concrete curbs poured up against the house, right up against the siding, and the door is like this high, so you gotta step down into the house. So it's probably, you know, rotten footings, or, you know, probably in disrepair. So anyway, just questioned that. And then there was another one that I turned in quite a while ago. I turned it to a planning commission meeting, and it was about, and I don't know if you know, I've been kind of actively involved with short-term rentals on our street. But there was three of them on Inglewood, and there was one on Stark. The one on Stark belongs to a gentleman named Tim Chartran or something. Nice guy, you know, I like him, he's a good builder, but I don't feel what he's doing is quite right. He's built his house, and he is letting guests stay with him, so it's like a duplex. And our neighborhood is strictly single-family only. So I did turn a copy of this in when I was talking about short-term rentals, and the planning commissioner had a copy of this, but I did turn another one, and just for like a refresher, to the blight guy, Shannon?
Uh huh, Shannon Murray.
That was in the works, so I was just kind of curious of those. And like I said, maybe something's already in the works now. And I've been here like 42 years, and when you come down into the city, the township right there by Plagans, the Marina there?
Uh huh.
And you enter the township, there are three or four lots on the east side of the road?
Are you coming in from the north side?
The north.
Okay.
Coming down from the north, and you're coming in, and there's three or four lots there. They're right across from the Marina or Inglewood, and they're overgrown, and they've been like this for years. And there's big piles of concrete, some boats and stuff stuck in there. So I thought if the house wasn't there, that you weren't supposed to store something on it, and they were cleaning up. I did say they cleaned up the one on Stark, which was very nice, that boathouse was falling in. So, I mean, things are happening, but I just had these, you know, a few questions. And I couldn't get an address, because these have been vacant for so long. There's, they're just all overgrown, and sometimes you can see, you know, a huge pile of concrete back there, and some boats and trucks and stuff. But anyway, I was under the impression that if you didn't have a house, you weren't supposed to store some on, keep it clean or whatever.
Gotcha.
So I couldn't give you an address on those, it's just the general location.
Yeah, that's right on M29?
Yes, sir.
And it's east of M29?
East side, yeah. Almost if you're coming out of Inglewood, or if you're coming out of On the Rocks, there's like three, right, you're looking right at them.
We'll check the blight right up and see if that's...
But I didn't have an address, I can just give you a rough idea. And then those other three ones, I did turn in, and I just haven't heard nothing. And that was back from April. And usually the guy's very good, he tries, you know, he's like a one-man band, and I know he's overworked, and...
Are you referring to Shannon?
Shannon, yes.
Shannon Murray?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, and he says he likes paper, so I did turn in the paper, so that's...
Well, it takes a village, right? And we appreciate the concerns.
Okay.
The board members often refer to our blight complaints, and we take them very seriously.
There was, there was one other one that I didn't turn in, but it's on 7800, and it's near that Don's house.
Is this on Inglewood again?
This one's on Lake. And the house went back, I'm thinking it went back in foreclosure, but the young man is, elderly gentleman's still living there. So I don't know if he's got permission, if he's a squatter, or what, but, I mean, maybe he's got permission to be there. You know, he's a nice guy or something, but I did hear the house went back to foreclosure. And once in a while you see a little garbage bag outside, but you never see him. So I don't know if he needs help, or assistance, or whatever, but I think there's somebody still living there.
Gotcha, I will forward your concerns, Tom, to both Artie and Shannon Murray, okay?
Okay.
Thanks for bringing them to our attention.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Any other public comments? Okay, moving forward to our consent agenda, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the minutes from the board meeting of 9/7/2021 and 9/20/2021. The communication of retirement from Officer Dowell from our police department, and the check reports for board-approved 9/20/2021 payroll, and the checks cut in between meetings.
Support.
Motion and support. Is this a roll call?
No.
No.
Are they in the discussion on the consent agenda?
No.
Mark, Maureen? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the consent agenda and motion approved. Next, we have the fire chief's report. Chief Roos?
Good evening. Fire chief's report for September 2021. During the month of September, I attended two meetings, and that was the Harsons Island, St. Clair Flats Homeowners Association, and the St. Clair Colony Fire Chiefs Association. General business was discussed. Fire department participated in two parades in the month of September, the Pete Henkel Boat Parade, and the Harsons Island Lions Club Parade over there, which was quite large. Both parades were quite large, a lot of participation in that, very nice. We finally received the last of our equipment for our trucks, our new engines. It's been, they've been mounted. I do have a few people that need to finish up their training on them. And one truck's in service, the other one truck will be going over to the island the end of this week. So we'll have that one in service. New airboat training will be this month. We'll be conducting driving, towing, and launching the vessel, along with stressing safety on the boat. Fire department's also scheduled for an RTF training, which is Rescue Task Force Training. That's where we go in to the school if there's, or any active shooter incident. We will support the police and go in and address the injured that have been involved, and aid them care, and then remove them out of the structure. And that will be put on by Bill Adams from TriHospital, and that will be done on the 23rd of October. We did schedule that for last year, but COVID hit, and they had to cancel that class. So we finally got her back. We're very busy in the month of September with bad storms. We had several downed wires, and trees, and power lines across roadways, and in yards, and widespread power outages, so... Next month, or I should say this month, Fire Boat Two will be pulled out of the water. Believe it will be next week, and then Fire Boat One will stay in until the month of December.
Fire Boat, the Fire Boats are still over Colony?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And of course, the airboat is over in the yard?
We have it, I have it at Rose Marine, and they're... They have a warehouse right there on...
M29?
And it's inside. And we're gonna pull that, we'll have that, we're gonna put that in our station once we get the other truck in service over on the island. We just don't have the room to put everything in it.
Yeah, so once you get the engine finished for the island, you'll move that over there permanently, and that bay will be taken up by the airboat?
Yep.
Thank you, chief.
Any other questions for chief?
Good job.
Hey, your October 23rd training, is that, is that in-house?
Yes, that'll be conducted here at the fire station. We'll be doing the, a little bit of hands-on, and then we plan on doing a full-blown drill with the police department, once everybody's trained in it.
Awesome. Thanks, chief.
Yep.
Next agenda item is unfinished business, where at this period of time, we have none. So we're on to the new business topics. New business topic 1A has to do with the Building Department and Ordinance 145. It's Clay Township Building Code Ordinance, Setting Permit Fees. It's a Resolution 2021-40. Gary?
Good afternoon.
How you doing today?
Right. Yeah, this is a couple of different resolutions we're hoping to push forward to. If you wanted to just talk about the first one first, or...
That'd be great.
Okay. So we're looking to align ourselves with the state of Michigan fees. And it's not as drastic as it might sound. Generally, and depends on the size of the project, but generally, you're looking at about $25 or $45 more, and that's about it. The main increase will come in administration fees and inspection fees. But it's just aligning ourselves with the state of Michigan. I know we sent you probably a lot of paperwork on this, I don't know if you had a chance to review it, but we do have a lot of our surrounding communities that are already aligned with the state. And we're just kind of falling into that same groove. We haven't updated our inspection fees, or our permit fees, I should say, in about 20 years, from what I understand. So we're just looking to be current, and kind of put it to a point where, when the state raises their fees, we can raise ours automatically also. But our actual line item fees that we do have now, it's about the same. There's no real change there, it's mainly in inspection costs. Obviously, it costs more today to inspect than it did 20 years ago. So we're just trying to get ourselves to that point.
Yes.
Now, you said you sent us a whole lot of, and I see that you're, but it's not, it's not the entire building code from the state though?
Oh, oh, well, we're talking about our inspection fees right now.
Right.
But...
Also, I'm referring to the inspection fees.
Yeah, but that's, yeah, that's just aligning ourselves with the state of Michigan, and our surrounding communities.
But I imagine there's an inspection fee for footings for a garage over 400 square feet? Not just for the footings and the foundation? Is that part of the building code, our building fee?
Yeah, absolutely, that would be within the permit fees, that's all incorporated in there.
Okay. I was trying to pick that apart, and I couldn't see it, so...
Okay.
I'm sure it is.
Yeah, there's a lot of inspections that go on for just a typical building. You know, we don't have all those listed out, but, but yeah.
Is there a percentage on what the increase would be?
And, you know, I tried to come up with that number, and because the different cost, depending on the size of your job, is so different, and that's why I went more to a dollar amount. Depending on the size of the job, it's gonna be $25 more for an inspection that, what we're charging now. Our zoning, our zoning permits, like swimming pools or fences, you know, those type of zoning sheds, those that go from what's right now, we're actually paying people to pull the permits. We're definitely underwater on those, so we're just trying to break even on those kind of fees. So that'll be up about 45 bucks from what they're used to paying. But pretty subtle, considering that we haven't raised fees in 20 years.
I see fees, you have a whole list, a whole block of fees for, you know, dishwasher?
Right.
And all that?
Right.
So actually, you're supposed to pull a permit for all of this stuff that I see in here?
That's correct. Those permits on the mechanicals and plumbing, electricals, all, depending on what you're doing, is what determines the cost of your permit.
But that's specifically for new installations, not existing?
In some cases.
Could be remodeled as well, right?
Correct. But as far as those goes, and we'll just use that as an example, a dishwasher. Virtually, the same fees that we charge now are the same fees that the state is charging now. So there's gonna be no difference there. That's, you know, some of our fees from the state is actually a little less than what we charge now. And that's why I said our main increases are going to involve administration fees and inspection fee.
But all of those fees would be set by adopting the Michigan Building Code, correct?
That's correct.
And then, do we need, that's the zoning, recommended zoning permit fees, is that separate?
That, well, it's part of the fees, but it's not something that the state of Michigan has underneath their fee schedule, so that's a local...
We'd be setting those separately?
Yes.
Okay.
And the fees that I put down on that paper would pretty much break us even. And that's providing that they only have, you know, one inspection, one and done kind of a situation. But at least that would be more near to being what we are, you know, what it costs us.
Are there any fees in here on the new, on the new proposal that are less than the current fee?
Uh huh. Yeah, there are.
That's important to know.
Yeah, so, I didn't realize these were separate. So the ordinance, the resolution that I put with the Ordinance 145 is essentially adapting the ordinance, which takes care of the building permit fees.
The fee schedule, right?
Fee schedule for building, yes. But separately, yes, we'll have to do a different motion to adopt the suggested zoning permit fees.
So which is first?
The building.
Well, let's tackle the...
One we've been talking about, the building.
Yep, the building. It's Ordinance number 145, the Clay Township Building Code Ordinance, Setting Permit Fees. It's Resolution 2021-40. Right, so I'll entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2140 to adopt the Clay Township Building Code for the actual Michigan Building Code 2015 edition, and subsequent codes utilized by the state of Michigan.
Support. Codes and corresponding fees, correct?
Yes.
So we have motion and support, can we get a roll call?
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
Chris O'Regan?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, the second part of our illustrious building officials' request is suggested zoning permit fees. Are we going, does that have a...
No.
Number associated with it?
No.
So we're just going to approve the paperwork in front of us of the, well, we're gonna, we're gonna motion to approve the suggested zoning permit fees for the sheds and fences. So I'll entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the suggested zoning permit fees for sheds and fences.
Support. And signs too, right? Yes, there's also signed permit fees, plan review.
So for the viewers at home, we have a suggested zoning permit fee. The zoning permit fee includes application fees, $100. The suggested signed permit fee attached to the building is 50, and with a foundation, it's 100. And we also have a $30 plan review fee. Right?
Correct.
That's the minimum, so...
Minimum review fee, yes.
Yep. So we have motion and support?
We do.
For the zoning permit fees set before us. Roll call?
Chris O'Regan?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes as well.
Thank you so much.
So you are much more current than 20 years ago, sir.
Yeah, no, absolutely, and I say, there's not a big difference. But at least, you know, like last, our last audit showed that our department was down, and it's not that we're not efficient and doing the job the best that we can. It's just we got a shortfall because of 20-year-old fees.
We're not charging enough, are we?
Right.
So that should be published on October 13th, and then would be taking effect November 12th.
Thank you so much.
November 12th? Thank you, Gary.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Okay, next on our agenda is a Resolution 2021-41. It's a special assessment for Joe Char Road paving. So I will entertain a motion?
Make a motion to approve Resolution 21-41A for Resolution 1 for Joe Char paving?
Support.
We have motion and support. Is there any more discussion on the resolution? Mark, Maureen?
Trying to get, trying to get my iPad up.
Want to see it?
They did have 64% in favor respond, and seven parcels that did not.
So, yeah, from the assessing department, Mark and Maureen, why you guys pull this up? I'll just read this real quick. We have a, received a petition requesting a special assessment district be formed for replacement or repaving of the private road, George, Joe Char Road. There are 22 parcels in the district. Petition is based on total frontage footage in the district, which resulted in a sufficiency of 64.78% in favor of the improvement, and 35%, 35.22% did not respond. The proposal is from Clancy's Contracting, in the amount of $90,125 plus interest, and administrative fees TBD. If approved, this assessment would be spread on a per parcel basis of approximately $4,097 plus interest, plus administrative fees, and number of years will be a board determination.
You know, the only question I have is the company that is doing that. I haven't seen the site plan for that particular paving, how high it's going to be, the elevation. You know, we don't want to put something in there and prove that they go ahead and contract it out, and then, of course, they're gonna pay for it, but, and then all of a sudden, it creates problems down the road somewhere. So someone should take a look at that, and make sure that the elevation is gonna be correct with that paving of that street. It's the only thing I'm asking.
So I would agree, but we don't have necessarily, I think, all the specs on this just yet. It's a Resolution 2021-41, which is the first part in a, in a series of parts to get this approved, Mark.
Correct. It's just, just offering to move, saying that we agree that they should move forward, or we don't have an issue with them moving forward, so they can actually get the job bid. I do know that PC did consult on it, and they do have a couple of companies that are bidding on it, but I don't think we have all that, until we say, yeah, we're willing to move forward and process this.
Well, I just wanted to make that as a point, to say, as we go down the road, people are gonna ask.
Yep. And that information should be provided to us at a later date in time. We're just giving them, the way I understand the motion to read, is we're giving them authorization and authority to move forward with the bidding portion of it.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
I'll still have a chance to approve or disapprove, once we get it.
We will, and we'll set terms in, in periods of time.
Very similar to the resolutions that you guys did for North Channel on the island?
Probably 10 or 15 years will do.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any more discussion? Mark, you good?
I'm good.
Kristi?
Yes.
Let's do a roll call.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
Chris O'Regan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Do I have one more thing?
Please.
So in my portion, I knew that there was one more thing that we were trying to do, and that, that is 2021-40. What we're looking for in that regard is for an automatic, when it comes to a new code, a new code cycle, that we're automatic, will follow the state of Michigan. When they update, update the codes, that we will automatically update along with them.
Okay.
Without having to come before the board and, and ask for that every time a code is updated.
So we will walk in step with the state of Michigan. When they make a change, we will make a change.
As far as codes, yes.
And I think that is in our...
Was that in our resolution?
Yes.
To include both of them?
Yep, it says the 2015 edition and subsequent codes utilized by the state of Michigan.
Okay, so that's, just so we understand, it's an automatic upgrade?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
I got your back.
You good with that? Okay. 1C on the agenda is the Clay Township Milestone Award plaque. I will entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the Clay Township Milestone Award Plaque in the amount of eight hundred and thirty dollars, coming from line item one oh one, two six five, nine three three, Building Maintenance.
I will support it. So you have motion and support. This plaque is to recognize and celebrate our, by some telling you, two hundred years for the township. That's what this item is referring to. We found an area where we can take it from our budget, and we think it'd be a good idea. We're talking, we're in talks of where that is going to be displayed. But it will be, you know, it will be a serious plaque that's meant to be here for future generations to acknowledge and and support and read on the history of Clay Township.
It will also register us with the Historical Society of Michigan.
Fantastic.
Where would a plaque like that be displayed?
Well, there's been a couple of, couple of suggestions so far, and I think we'll probably deliberate on that later. But one of the suggestions would be possibly at our our time capsule location, wherever we decide where you're going to put that. Maybe that's over in the park. Maybe this plaque is celebrated or or identified here within the township offices. You know, maybe one of our frontages. I don't think we have the location picked out yet, do we?
We do not.
So I think we will probably be involved in that decision when that comes. Do you have some suggestions, trustee Bouchard? Okay.
Sounds good to me.
Great. So we have motion and support. All in favor of approving the Clay Township Milestone Award Plaque, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is for the Clay Township Police Department. And they're looking for approval on the TASER purchase. It's year four of a five-year contract in the amount of nine thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars. I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the police department TASER purchase, year four of our five-year agreement for nine thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars.
Support.
We have motion and support by trustee Bouchard. All in favor of the Clay Township TASER purchase, year four of five, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. So we'll have one more payment on that bad boy, right?
Yep.
Probably be time for new ones. One E is the agenda item for the fire department. It's a fire truck bond payment for the new trucks, correct?
Correct.
And it's by High Point?
Yes.
So I will entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the fire truck bond payment, the amount of thirty-two thousand one hundred eighty-five dollars and eighty cents, of which twenty-four thousand eight hundred and ninety-one dollars and seventy-seven cents goes to line two oh six, nine ninety, nine ninety-one oh six for the principal payment. Seven thousand two hundred and ninety-four dollars and three cents for the interest payment will go to line two oh six, nine ninety, nine ninety-five oh six.
Support.
Support.
We have motion and plenty of support. So the interesting thing, I was, I was crunching the numbers on this, and we have an outstanding interest rate. But the the principal versus the interest amount seemed to be interesting to me. So I started looking into it and asked a few questions, and I was reminded that this is a semi-annual payment. We make this twice a year, correct?
Yes.
So that's, that's how the numbers correspond. So at that dollar amount, we will have a, so we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
Chris Oregan?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Great, the motion passes. Next item on our agenda is the, from the Clay Township Fire Department. It's the MAFF Michigan Association of Firefighters, a tentative agreement for the CBA. And I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the Fire Department MAFF tentative agreement for CBA.
Support. We'll support that motion. Discussion?
Now, just to be clear, this is a term from July first of twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
These are the only changes that were going to be made to their collective bargaining agreement.
Took quite, it took a while to get to this, didn't it?
It did, yes.
Finally, we have agreement.
Okay, we have motion and support, correct?
We do.
Roll call vote, please.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
Chris Oregan?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Mark Bouchard?
Yes.
So it was with great pleasure that we will pass this motion. And thank you to Cindy Valentine, Kristi Hilton, Chief Rose, and our supervisor, Artie Bryson, for their hard work on this. Thank you to all the firefighters for their bravery and their support of this township. Next item we have on the agenda, one G. It's a request from the Fire Department for a Dex turnout gear. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the Fire Dex turnout gear for two sets in the amount of five thousand four hundred and fifty-eight dollars from line two oh six, nine seventy oh one. I understand this is the same thing that was on the last board meeting for two different sets. So that's why there's no invoice here. It's the same invoice we would have saw last meeting.
Support.
So that, that's for two sets, right?
Correct.
So we have motion and support. Chief, your idea is to continue buying a couple of sets every, what, couple of months or whatever, just to keep things current?
What happens is Brian Sears and Donovan Huber's gear comes due in the spring of next year.
Okay.
Right now, there's, there was, there's an increase that's going to go into effect of eight percent on the bunker gear sometime this month. If I can order that, that'll save us X amount of dollars towards the purchase of this new gear. And then next year, I'm looking at two more sets of gear. So we'll, we'll be buying gear instead of, you know, a couple sets or maybe one set a year, depending on when it comes due.
Mm-hmm.
So we're not at one point where we're buying seventeen sets of gear.
That's a little easier on your budget, huh?
Yes, yes.
And with the eight percent savings, that's probably, I don't know, close to four hundred plus dollars, right?
Yep.
So that makes pretty good sense to me. Do we have any questions for the chief?
No, get them.
So we have motion and support. So all in favor of supporting the Fire Department's request for the Fire Dex turnout gear in the amount of five thousand four hundred and fifty-eight dollars, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, chief.
Thank you very much.
Next order of business, one H. It's from our Clay Township at DPW. It's an Eagle reliability study update, an amount of eight thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars. John, could you give us a, a quick briefing on this, please?
Sure, so this is a, it's a hydraulic analysis of our water system, which consists of updating our fire flows at our hydrants, our flows in our mains, our services. They'll add our colony water main to the system, that type of thing. It is mandated that we do this every five years by Eagle, and this was a budgeted item. So PC has all our data and naturally, you know, they can input this and do it relatively simply. Although it's, you know, eighty-seven hundred bucks, but.
Yeah, but something you support?
Absolutely.
Something that's required?
Required, we have to do it every five years, yes.
And we budgeted it.
And we budgeted it.
Mm-hmm.
What a man hour it tends to take to do that.
Oh, gosh. I couldn't tell you, Mark, off the top of my head.
They have all the data.
But there is a lot to it, there really is. There's some field work and and some other things, too, so.
It looks like we're kind of overdue then. It says it was last done in fourteen.
We actually are, yes. We're a year, we're about a year and a half overdue, so.
Okay. Well, I guess we best get on it then. Yeah.
So we have motion?
No.
Oh, so, okay, I'll entertain a motion to support the Eagle reliability study in the amount of eight thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars? In fact, let's change that. I will make a motion to support the DPW Eagle reliability study in the amount of eight thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars, coming from line item five nine one dash eight oh seven.
Support.
We have motion and support. Any further discussion?
Is there any cost involved because we are late in doing it?
No, no, not at all. I talked, I talked with Eagle, Will Disser, who's our district engineer. We had a little meeting here a few months back, and he said, and I explained to him, we were in the middle of colony water main and all that, and he had no problem with it at all, so.
What was Will's last name?
Will Disser. He's our, he's our district engineer, yes.
Thanks, John. So now we have motion and support. All in favor of approving the DPW Eagle reliability study, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next order of operation, we have a, something else from our DPW. It's Anchor Bay Drive Station number four pump repair in the amount of six thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. I will entertain a motion?
Make a motion to approve Anchor Bay Drive Station number four pump repair for six thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars from line five nine zero nine three zero.
Support.
A motion and support. John, what happened to our pump?
As you can see, I think you all got a picture of the quote from Kennedy.
Yeah.
The stator windings are completely melted. They thought it was due to a voltage issue, probably during one of our recent storms. So, you know, the rest of the pumps in very good condition. They were going to replace the stator and, you know, put everything else back where it needed to be. That's about a twelve to fourteen thousand dollar pump, so.
Okay, it's kind of like rebuilding it.
How old is that pump?
That pump is about two years old. That's the unfortunate part. I wish it was one of our older pumps.
Bolts were loose?
What's that?
The bolts, bolts were loose?
The bolts were loose because that was done by us when we pulled the pump. Yeah, prior to us taking, taking it to Kennedy, yeah.
Is there something temporary there working for them until we get this, or?
Uh, right now, we're running on one pump.
Oh.
So there's no redundancy at that station.
Gotcha. Any idea how long the repair's going to take?
Um, couple weeks.
Couple weeks?
Yeah.
So sooner the better, huh?
Yes.
Okay.
For sure.
That's, that's one of our bigger stations, so. Okay. So we have motion and support. It's under ten, so board, all in favor of approving the DPW request for the Anchor Bay Drive Station number four Kennedy pump repair, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. Okay, we are on to our board member comments. So we start with our quick.
Sure, I don't really have anything other than enjoy the weather while it's here because it's going to get cold soon. That's it, that's all I got.
Thank you. Mark?
Yeah, last Wednesday at the planning commission, then we had a power outage. We didn't finish the, the session. We just got into the zoning ordinance change, item twenty-nine, and that lot going from R one to C three. So we postponed that until the next meeting, and that's all I have, thanks.
Maureen?
I have nothing. Happy to be here.
Um, I just want to report to the board and to the citizens, we are having a mail issue. We have been receiving mail for the past couple weeks that we should have gotten, some of it's postmarked. I think today we received something that was postmarked June, no, not June, September tenth. So I'm, I'm encouraging, if you have questions about online payments, you can make a payment through your bank, which they'll send us a check, but we seem to be getting those. It's hit or miss with mail. So I'm encouraging online payments because we've had so many people that attempted to pay their taxes on time, and we did not receive it.
I do believe there was just a big write-up in the paper over the weekend that the postal service is actually slowing some mail down now. Standard first-class mail, it used to be one to two days, is now going to be three to five, so it's only going to get worse. But we also had some certified mail.
That's what I was going to say, too.
That was postmarked September sixteenth that we got.
Last week.
What, the twenty-eighth, I think, so. It's not us.
Well, it's a township.
How do we handle that? Do you wave the late fees?
We set up some excellent, some excellent online payment options.
Right.
They're, they're relatively easy, and and we really encourage our citizens to explore that option, to take a look, to call us with any questions. It's pretty self-explanatory, and it's all based off of our website. You can follow it down. It's not very complicated. There's lots of ways to access your information, and the fees associated are minimal, or cheaper than driving to the township and dropping off a check.
If you pay with an e-check, it's ninety-five cents. So if you figure the cost of a stamp right now is fifty-three cents, so for ninety-five cents, you can pay it online and know that we receive it.
Are you getting a delay from the banks as they process the checks, which is electronically, not, 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 from, from the customer to the bank? And then the bank, they actually mail it in?
When you do an online payment through your own bank account?
Yeah.
A lot of people think that it's an electronic payment because it comes electronically out of your account, but they actually print a check and send it to us.
I know, and I'm only asking, that's the way I pay mine.
Yeah.
I, I try to do it quick.
Yes. Yeah, but some people kind of waited till the last minute. It's really what you were asking is a case-by-case basis. We have to look at, did they attempt, you know? When we're getting it this late, we know there's a mail problem. Did they attempt to pay it on time, or was it, you know?
Yeah, when you see the postmark and you know, then that's.
But some of them come without postmarks.
Right.
So.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
All right, I just want to remind the snowbirders, it's that time of year, a lot of people are getting ready to leave the state for the winter months, and I get it. Let's make arrangements for your plumbing to be drained. Let's, let's drain all the traps, supplies. I, I think red pop and or blue pop is in short order this year. I've heard there's a, there's a, a supply and demand issue. So let's, let's do your part, be proactive. Feel free to leave your name, number, and identify with the Clay Township Police Department, who will, as part of their regular patrol, stop by your place from time to time. They'll check it out for you, they'll do a little report, they'll make sure that all your doors and windows are secure. And it's a service offered by our Clay Township to all of our residents. So we're grateful for the police department for something like that. And lastly, it's the time of year where the leaves are going to start falling, the weather's going to start getting colder. So if you have an older home with like foundation vents and things, let's clean them out. It's probably that time of year to get them shut and take a good look around at your property because it won't be very long, and we will no longer want to work outside.
Sorry, but you bear bad news.
With that being said, we have one more motion.
Um, I would like to point out, our next meeting, October eighteenth, is at the Harsons Island Lions Hall at six o'clock.
October eighteenth?
October eighteenth at the Harsons Island Lions Club.
And then I will make the motion to adjourn.
Support.
We have motion and support. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you.